The United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, underground, individual, liberty and justice.
To ask for a moment of silence, especially with fourteen Americans who were killed in Israel today, and forty infants that were Israeli, and this act of terror that we can be silent and pray for. For everyone's situational awareness, there is concurrently going on an LEC Authority meeting, that is where Supervisor Nelson is currently upstairs in the old boardroom. We also have Supervisor Ung, who I believe is calling in from India potentially, and so if you hear background elevator music, it's not the ambiance, it's to maybe patch him in at some point, and our auditor will let us know when that is. So, first item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Radegh, second by Bittenger. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes three to zero. Is there a way to mute that music, by chance? Okay, thanks, Andy. Or at least to change it up a little bit. Consent agenda is the next items, those are two through eight, and they constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the October third, 2023, meeting. Item three, approval of the claims. Item four, from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas. A is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B is the authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item five, County Auditor Pat Gill. A, receive the auditor's quarterly report. B is to receive the county recorder's report of fees collected. Six, Board Administrator Dennis Butler, approval of the annual urban renewal report for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Seven is Board Administrator Karen James. A is the approval of the appointment of Kevin Fauch to the Woodbury County Library Board Trustee, and B, the approval of lifting tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to recertify their income, or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Item eight, Secondary Roads County Engineer Mark Nara. A is the approval of the permit to work in the right-of-way for Josh Heatland, and to direct the chair to sign the permit. And B is approval of the underground utility permit for Mariette Russett, Matt Jackson, and to direct the chair to sign the permit. This ends tonight's consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll move the consent agenda.
There's a motion by Radegh, and a second by Bittenger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion passes three to zero. Item nine, with the consent of our parliamentarian, would you be comfortable moving to item eleven to give the LEC Authority a little more time if they're able to do that?
Item eleven?
Okay. So, we're gonna move down to item eleven, and the reason for doing that, just for the situational awareness of the public, the items nine and ten are probably best answered by members of the LEC Authority. Before mentioned, they're still having a meeting, so if we can move to item eleven, County Auditor Pat Gill, this is approval of the engineer's report for creation of Salix Drainage District, and direct the auditor to send notices to landowners.
Good afternoon. And so, yes, in the report, you should have in front of you lists that the lands would receive benefit by drainage and the creation of the Salix Drainage District, so.
Can you give us your name and the entity that you represent, just for the good of the public?
Patrick Mau, and represent, I guess, petitioners would be for the creation of the Salix Drainage District.
Okay.
Or being Stranham.
Thank you, go ahead.
So, next step would be to schedule a public hearing. That would be roughly forty days, or can be no sooner than forty days from today, which would be November nineteenth, that is Thanksgiving week. So, the soonest would be the Tuesday of Thanksgiving for that hearing. And also picking a location for that hearing, from my previous experience, I, there tends to be people, I don't know if this room, I think this room would be big enough, but I anticipate there will be a significant number of, you know, people here, you know, for that hearing.
All right. Are there any peculiarities or specificities that we ought to know in terms of the approval of this report and scheduling the public hearing, or is this fairly ministerial?
Well, being it's the first time this has been done in about thirty years, that's a great question. I have visited with, you know, the attorney that the district, you know, appointed, Brian Young. He feels that the report meets his requirements, here meets the requirements of Iowa Code four sixty-eight, and so the next step is to schedule that hearing. Would I say it's ministerial? No, because quite frankly, it's not done often, so it's not routine. So, in some ways, I'm learning with everyone, if you will, as I think any engineer really in the state would be. So, I don't know if that answers your question, Jeremy. I mean, it's a good question, but I don't, I don't know if I can answer it how me, how you would like me to.
No, I, I think that's fair. I just wanted to make sure that we knew any information either you, or Otter Gill, or anyone else thinks that would be helpful for the board or county engineer, so if there's anybody that would like to speak and inform our decisions, that'd be great.
Hi, everybody. Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix. The only thing that is different than we originally anticipated is that we had an additional landowner petition to be included in the VNK report. Rick Patterson and the engineer reviewed the situation, and took some of the land in, not all of it, and it was included, part of it. So, that was the only major change, and it delayed the process by several months. That's why we're not here sooner, because of that person. But now it's all resolved, so we're happy to have it finally in front of you for you guys to make the hearing in forty days.
And I don't think this impacts your decision tonight, but what, let's fast forward theoretically to the hearing, would you say that this would, and I know it's impossible for you to prognosticate, but would you think that most people would be in favor? Would this be something that'll be a divided room? What are we getting into?
I think the vast majority would be in favor of it. They understand that we need to drain the water somewhere. I'm sure they're not gonna be thrilled that there's going to be another source of tax to their properties, but the alternative is to have your basements flooded, or your house flooded, or the streets flooded, or all of that. So, you might get some people that are not thrilled that there's gonna be another tax, but the flip side is, if you do nothing, then the next time we have a heavy rain, we have nowhere to pump the water. So, could have folks on both sides, people that are like, yes, let's get this drainage district created so we can move forward and make the infrastructure needs we need to. You might have some people saying no, because we don't want to be taxed.
That's very helpful. Otter Gill, anything?
Is there a potential cost to the county as part of this?
I answered it in the form that was submitted to the board directly to the supervisor. I do not anticipate, you know, a cost, however, to secondary roads, there will be a direct cost if the district is finalized or, you know, approved.
What will that cost look like?
Is that the four hundred and fifty-two thousand?
Yes.
And that pays for?
It pays for road crossings, so I see Mark is in, and I see he sent me an email about an hour ago.
There was some distribution of cost for road crossing. We're required to pay any road crossings that a drainage district passes through one of our roadways. My issue with this one is that costs should be distributed between Woodbury County and the city of Salix, since it's a corp line road. That would be normal, that was in part caused by the additional lateral one to the report, which was outside the original scope of the district. They have a petition from a landowner north of two hundred and seventy-fifth street to add an additional lateral.
Is that something that is, needs to be answered tonight, or is that something that could be?
I don't know that it needs to be answered tonight, but it would be something that should be discussed at the public hearing. And I'm sure he'll address my comments and concerns prior to that public hearing as well, so. But I don't see a reason why the board wouldn't approve the report tonight, have the public hearing, and then you would make the decision on establishment following the public hearing.
Joshua, does that conclude, or do you have some follow-ons?
No, I, that sufficiently answers it for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Dennis Butler, budget analyst.
I think there was some cost that the county does get reimbursed in their attorney fees that we paid out general basic.
Yeah, that would be part of the initial assessment, once the district is established.
And we'll get money put back in our general basic funds, whatever costs we helped initiate for, because they don't have.
Correct. You have billings from VNK as well, so.
Okay.
Those all become part of that initial assessment that's against the properties within the district, which are laid out in his report.
Well, we do get some money reimbursed. Okay.
I will move.
If we can, go ahead, Leo, before you make the motion, if that's okay?
I don't think we.
I think you stopped mid-motion.
I am the original petitioner, or my boy is, for this, for Salix. They need the drainage. You did add, how many more acres? Four hundred and twenty acres? Because that's what, that's what is owned by that individual. And all I'm saying is, if you want to make drainage for him, there's gotta be some kind of a stop, that that water doesn't come back into Salix, in case it freezes. If we get an ice jam in the spring, it's gonna have a channel to come back in to the city of Salix. I mean, you, you need drainage, but you have to be careful in what you're doing here. So, either have a stop that it can't drain, or a stop that it can't kick back into Salix. Can that, can that be taken care of? I mean, how many, and then, the new lateral that you're putting in is that lateral one?
Correct.
Do the farmers along that have a right to kick into that lateral then? Because the way the farmers drainage district is set up, when we run laterals, and we ditch our land, we can kick right into that with, and we can put tubes in, we can dump into that. Is that gonna be a possibility there? That's gonna add more acres. All I'm asking for is safety measures, so it doesn't kick back into Salix.
So, lateral one for the board parallels the interstate, so I do not anticipate how there would be a significant cost for a landowner to have a culvert cross two lanes, you know, of the interstate. So, regarding land, you know, from the, from the west, you know, proceeding east into the district, I do not see how that really would be practically, economically, if you will, an option. And then the lands that are on to the west of the lateral would all already be included, you know, and then that, that would terminate, you know, at, basically at the interstate.
Okay, because it's gonna be dumping into, it's going across two eightieth, it's gonna dump into two eightieth, right?
Correct.
That's what drains the whole ton of Salix.
Correct.
And to the north, that's higher. That water's gonna come first. It's gonna stop this water from going. I'm just saying, be careful here.
Okay.
Because we need some protection. I'm okay, I have farmland, I don't have any houses, but we have the farmland right there, and my boy does, and we signed a petition because we know Salix needs it. It's a shame they got shut off going on lateral H, but.
So, is that something that you might be able, and just so you know, I have Supervisor Ung trying to FaceTime right now, I think he tried to call in, but there's something about a voicemail disabled, I think it's a technical difficulty that we're having. So, are you there Supervisor Ung?
Yes, sorry, call on this way.
No, that's okay. We're, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties, perhaps, so if the board, Otter Gill, are you okay with this? Beacon here, okay? All right, thank you. So, looks like we're having some technical difficulties, but we now have a four-person board. Is that something that, in relationship to Leo's comments, I noticed the board tonight is tentatively approving the report, could be amended potentially, based on all of your discussions?
I want it approved.
Okay.
I want it approved.
Yep. Yeah, no, I, I understand.
To clarify, yes, it is a tentative approval till, you know, the hearing, and then whatever is determined through the hearing, whether it's approved or not. And I think Leo's comments can be addressed between now and the public hearing.
Okay, great.
Let's say even, wouldn't some of that be potentially part of the public hearing as well?
Right.
So, I'll go ahead and move item eleven, approve the engineer's report for creation of Salix Drainage District, and direct the auditor to send the notices.
Now, second. So, we have a motion by Radegh, and a second by Bittenger, to tentatively approve the report and schedule a public hearing on the report, not less than forty days from October tenth. I'm repeating a little bit of this for Supervisor on the phone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no, and the motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
Just a question for Pat, when will we know when that notice is? Will that be the nineteenth of November, or will it be like a week after?
I cannot hear a word you're saying.
Sorry. So, for the notice, you know, it's forty days, which would be, so that'd be the nineteenth, you know, or.
Whatever you tell me to do, I will do.
Thank you.
Right, having dispensed with item eleven, we will see if we can buy a few more minutes and go on to item twelve, which is reports on committee meetings, and we'll go from left, our left, to your, to our right. So, Supervisor Radegh, anything?
We did have a merd meeting where I'm not a voter, I am just a liaison overseer, however you want to call it, non-voting member.
Ex officio.
Ex officio, yeah, I don't know, not very official. Anyway, just interesting to see the, the numbers at the Hard Rock were, I think, down last month, which I think is an indication of, you know, a lot of business activity just in general. And there was a lot of comment about how maybe if they required all sports betting to be done in casinos, maybe we wouldn't have so many Iowa, Iowa State kids getting kicked off of teams, or investigated by NCAA, because they wouldn't have been able to get into the casino in the first place, so.
Thank you very much. Notice no Nebraska kids were named. Anything from the other side?
The only thing I had is Veterans Affairs meeting, just a good note to the directors there, there's an increase per veteran in the dollar amount of benefits they're receiving. So, Woodbury County right now, out of the ninety-nine counties, we're number five, and we're increasing per, per veteran, the amount of benefits that we're able to help our veterans here in Woodbury County is increasing over the last six months, so kudos to Stellani and all her staff. And then, also, we're seeing the number of veterans in Woodbury County that didn't know they had benefits, coming and getting enrolled in those benefits, and just finding the services that are helping them. So, we're just helping take care of our own, and that's the only thing I have for this week.
Thank you very much. I would just echo, thank you for attending, I'm sorry I was not able to, to let people know on the board that we are looking to complete the repairs that were a result of vandalism in the director's office. It probably will not be until spring, because Kenny shared that opening up that building envelope as it gets colder and colder, and that project would be about six to eight weeks out right now, so then you're into late December, and so having a quarter of your building open may not be comfortable. So, it'll probably be an early spring project, but I think that they'll be well pleased. And there's some reconfiguration of taking out one door, and, you know, probably bored you with the details, but bottom line is, what was damaged will be fixed and repaired at a reasonable and good cost to keep serving our veterans. Thank you for highlighting the good work there. Any other committee meetings? Hearing none, we are going to move back to item nine. This is the Board of Supervisors, myself, Board Administration Dennis Butler. This is information related to the overall funding status and the issue of a maintenance fund to the Law Enforcement Center. I anticipate that if we get through this item, and we don't have people from the LEC Authority, the Baker Group, Kenny Schmidt's here, we're not going to belabor item ten. I will ask, I know that their intention is to come back in two weeks anyway, but we'll defer on this particular item, and perhaps if it's allowable, we could read a statement from the Law Enforcement Center Authority. We'll, we'll visit that after this item. So, this is regarding the, the Law Enforcement Center. The number one thing right now, as you know, is to get the center open, but at the same time, to insist on the quality taxpayers deserve, we at the, at the same time are elected to be good stewards of every dollar that's used, to replace a nineteen eighty-seven LEC with its host of problems. And so, I have been very happy that the board deobligated nine hundred and forty-one thousand dollars that was duplicative, and is looking at even the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was dedicated to a maintenance shed that may not be built. And so, we are watching those dollars very carefully. I have a budget update from Dennis Butler that says that there's seven hundred and seventeen thousand, seven thirty-nine left. Is that correct, Dennis?
Correct.
Okay. If you take off the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if they choose not to do a maintenance shed, there's about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that are left, and we're watching those dollars very carefully. Today, we're turning our attention to the issue of a Law Enforcement Center Maintenance Fund, and I just want to make sure that the public understands, the purpose of the Maintenance Fund was to assure bondholders and taxpayers that the building wouldn't necessitate another borrowing of debt beyond the twenty-year holding of the LEC Authority. Then it'll transfer back to the county after twenty years. Number two, according to the Baker Group's Shane Albrecht, an engineer developed a list that was put in front of the LEC Authority that totaled eight million dollars. I asked for that list, and it is not in any LEC Authority meeting, it is not in front of any Board of Supervisors, so no one has that original list. I've asked Kenny, Karen, Dennis, and no one can produce that. They did ask for two or three weeks to come up for tonight's meeting with the list of what would comprise eight million dollars on a brand-new building. This isn't a criticism of having a maintenance fund, but the way that the lease is written basically says that it's at the sole discretion of the authority on any of those expenses, and they could spend it on anything related to maintenance of up to eight million dollars. It seems like a very high amount of dollars, and I want to make sure that people understand, these dollars are being taxed right now of Woodbury County citizens, four hundred thousand dollars a year. And right now, there's, and Dennis, you correct me if I'm wrong on this, there's one million dollars in that fund as of November first.
Correct.
As of May first, there's one point two million, and this will just continue to grow. It's direct taxation for this fund. And so, I think it begs the question, how much should be in that fund for a building that Board of Supervisors doesn't control the dollars to, and sits there? So, three point six million dollars a year is the bond and principal interest payment, plus another four hundred thousand, and I don't know that the general public has known that. And so, really, it begs the question, to what amount should that be there? And so, tonight, the goal was to receive information on the Maintenance Fund. And so, those would be some of the opening comments, and for the granularity of what constitutes that, item ten was to follow. So, I don't know if anyone has any comments, questions, concerns from a fiscal or legal standpoint, or otherwise.
I'll go back just to kind of discuss or throw it out there, the original reason a Maintenance Fund was put in there was at the insistence of basically just the mayor at the time, and that was because the county in the past showed negligence in maintaining the existing LEC. So, it was a question of trust, would the county actually maintain this brand-new building? So, there was a lot of question back and forth as to what the Maintenance Fund should be, and I believe it originally started at like ten million, and then it was kind of discussed and went down to eight million. I thought we actually went down to seven, but I guess it was eight.
No. It was eight million in amendment number two that all the board agreed to.
Okay. I thought it went to seven, but I guess it was eight. But either way, you know, it's kind of difficult to, you know, when you have a fifty-million-dollar bond, say that about twenty percent of that should sit in the Maintenance Fund, not paying down the bond, especially when most of the systems in this building are designed, engineered, built to last more than twenty years, and we could have the bond paid off instead. I just can't imagine too many people going out and building a brand-new house, say if you built a half-a-million-dollar house, you know, having twenty percent of that, you know, hundred thousand dollars sitting in a Maintenance Fund while you're paying interest on, on all that mortgage, you know, it just doesn't really make sense. So, we don't have Maintenance Funds on any other building, and I know some people say, well, maybe you should have Maintenance Funds on every building, but this building here was valued at over a hundred million dollars.
Meaning the Woodbury County courthouse.
It's the building we are in, correct, right now, was valued at over a hundred million dollars. So, are we gonna stick twenty percent of that in the Maintenance Fund for this building in the future?
I want to say something.
I don't think we would.
Three years, four years ago, we did have our engineer come in and say, how much it costs to redo this before COVID, to redo the outside, it's ten to twelve million. Now, after COVID, you're talking fifteen to eighteen million, probably. So, yes, you do need a Maintenance Fund, that's just the outside of the building. But let me remind you of something else here, too. We do not budget for maintenance anywhere. Every five years or less, we have to replace all of our PCs in the courthouse, because they run out of maintenance contract, they run out of parts. The sheriff's office replaced their tasers, we replaced their cameras on their bodies, replaced their cameras in the car about every five years. You add them all together, that's a probably, probably a million to million and a half. If you reduce this too far, you're gonna run into a problem where if the fund runs short, and you have to go borrow, you're limited to one point five million. Usually, in five years, you can see with the cameras, with the body cameras and the car cameras, cameras of jail, probably, or maintenance will run out in five years. That's probably a two-million-dollar expenditure to replace them.
What do you, Dennis, what do you base that two million dollars on?
That's their estimate, I believe, when they come back and show.
No, it's, no, it's not. So, this is one of my, one of my problems with this has been, we were told, and I was kind of chided at the time, right? I was scolded a little bit, well, we put the eight million dollars in front of the board.
Mm-hmm.
I said, no, you didn't. You never put it in front of us. So, I asked, well, then where does this exist? Well, we put it in front of the LEC Authority. Can you find it in the minutes? No. Can you find it in any records? Can anybody search? No. But we're, we're told with such dogged insistence, it's gotta be eight million. And then when you ask why, you say, well, the cameras are two million dollars every five years. Really? Every five years? So, you're telling me it's eight million dollars for the cameras over twenty years? I don't see that even in their estimates. It doesn't exist. So, I, I just want to be careful we don't make up numbers.
We, we need to see what they presented here.
You're, you're right, and I will give you one example. They present three point three million dollars in concrete for the parking lot. Do you know when that needs to be replaced? Anybody want to guess? Twenty sixty-two. And they say, well, you need to put away five and a half million. You're taxing people right now that will never see the benefit. I don't know if I'm gonna be alive in twenty sixty-two. Dennis, you're a pretty healthy guy.
My part won't be hurt either.
Yeah, but we're gonna tax you for it right now, and we're gonna start to accrue millions and millions and millions of dollars. None of these gentlemen on here are elected to oversee, it'll be on elected people, and I just think it's a very, very, I'm not arguing. against the Maintenance Fund, but when people make these broad-brush statements and then they don't have facts to back it up, it worries me that we're spending millions and millions and millions taxing today for, my parents aren't going to be here in 60 years to see that, but we're going to tax them this year for a building that's not yet opened. It just, it's some heartburn, to use our favorite.
But even our current buildings should all have a Maintenance Fund. We're making a mistake not doing it. Because when we come up to the courthouse, you got to pass the bond issue for 15 million probably.
Right. Your CIP, though, is typically what you use to pay for.
You're limited to a million and a half dollars.
The other, the other thing that doesn't really work for an analogy between this building and the LEC is that this one is 101 years old and the LEC is not even one year old. So.
Correct. Also, the bondholders in 20 years expect that building to be 100% perfect when it's handed over to the county and the bonds are paid off.
Well, hopefully.
We have safeguards and this is insurance. If you don't spend, it's fine because you get the money back.
If you're not spending
In 20 years.
All that money and putting it into a Maintenance Fund, it should be paid off well before 20 years.
I guess the other thing is when the first item is 2062, so you're going to have to replace the parking lots in 2062, maybe. 2082, they think that it can go to, I contacted our engineer on concrete. When you're putting millions and millions away, why wouldn't you do that beyond even 2040? Why wouldn't you do that in 2060? So, it raises the issue and it begs the question of a brand-new building. I don't disagree with the Maintenance Fund. People kind of make it an either-or, but I do disagree with this many. And you may ask, well, why'd you vote then to go to the 8 million? Because it's a limitation and it was decreased. And as we stand right now, we're in this lease and we have to concur. And so, I've asked the legal question, can the county be bound? Are we binding a future Board? Can the Board in 2045 say, we have to tax every year because of the decision that was made in 2023? I don't know legally that we can do that. So, I've asked that question.
When it's a resolution, I think you're legally binding future Boards forever until that resolution's changed. But the problem is, you can't change it unless both the Authority and the Board approves it. That's the problem.
Right. And I guess it's a legal, it's a legal question whether or not this Board can bind.
You should be able to answer that. Does a resolution bind future Boards, Joshua? Hate to put you on the spot, but it's, they should be an easy answer.
Was it done by a resolution?
It wasn't a resolution. February 14th.
There's some gray area to the extent that a current Board can bind a future Board.
They do with debt service bonds. That's by resolution and a vote of the people.
And the bonds themselves are basically contractual obligations that are operating in the background in that situation.
But these aren't bonds. This is promising, hey, for the next 20 years, will you tax $400,000 every year?
Yep.
So, a Board comes in and 15 years, maybe none of us are on the Board. And I say, hey, they bound us to tax you $400,000 a year.
But if you don't use debt service and you do need to get the money, where are you going to get it? There's no place to get the money except debt service.
For what? Could you give us anything?
$400,000 lease additional maintenance.
We can borrow up to 1.2, correct?
There's a 1.4.
1.5. So, we can borrow up to 1.5, correct?
But I think our goal is to get away from CIP loans and get these maintenance things where we don't have to borrow CIPs.
That's not, just speaking as one guy, that's not my goal. My goal is to take the least amount of taxpayer dollars from families in Woodbury County as is possible while still ensuring quality and not borrowing, not taxing them today for the concrete of 2062.
Then we don't have long-term planning then.
I don't, I absolutely disagree with that. I think you have poor planning without safeguards when you put $8 million and you say two unelected people that don't have any accountability of the voters are in charge of it. I just think it's something that we need to seriously think about and consider. And this is part of asking them to come here and tell us, you know, what are the numbers that support this? Are the cameras $2 million every five years? You know, and I've heard that too, so I'm not blaming you.
And then I couldn't even read this anyway because the numbers are all tied together.
Yeah, yeah. And so, my point isn't to be contentious, but I do think we have responsibility to taxpayers.
Well, I agree.
I just don't know.
One more thing, and the bondholders. If we don't have appropriate means to make sure that bill's in good shape in 20 years, the bondholders can come back on us, can affect our bond rating. I checked with our bond counsel. So, we got to be careful what we do here because we are going to be borrowing money for new interstate interchange down the road. And if we have to pay 0.5%, 1% more, it's a lot of money.
I'd just say in general, though, what other levels of government have Maintenance Funds on their building? I know, I was trying to think through anything on, you know, Sea City, whether it's the schools, whether it's the city council. And the only one I could really think of would be like the Orpheum Theater that, you know, had a lot of substantial donations that were given and put aside in a fund. But other than that, you know, the Tyson has a building fund built into the tickets, but that's, that doesn't even cover its annual maintenance, you know? Well, you could kind of sell tickets to the jail. But I, you know, and Salix, I don't know, you know, for City Hall, how much you pack away in a fund every year so you can rebuild City Hall every few years. But, yeah, that's kind of what I expected, but. Well, the same thing with the fire department. So, you know, it just doesn't happen at the local level. And I think it is, you know, probably a good thing maybe to be around $2 million because then you have 2 million plus your bond and capacity, you're at 3.5. What in the next 20 years? Plus, not to mention, you're going to have revenue that can offset bonding in the future. So, you could do revenue-abated bonds for a larger project. Instead of taxing people now for a fund that's a what-if, it doesn't make sense to me. You tax when you have the expense or you use revenue-abated bonds. And I think that's part of the point of having revenue-generating inmates in the first place.
But the problem is, and maybe you're totally right, but you got to convince the Authority the same thing. Nothing's changing. You can't change it here.
That's a legal question too, Dennis.
Okay. That's part of the lease agreement.
I understand.
You can't change the lease without both sides.
I understand. It's a legal question as well.
Okay.
And it's one that I think we need.
Trying to help you out before we get in a problem.
Well, and we're trying to help ourselves.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I think that there are those of us who are uncomfortable with the idea of a Maintenance Fund that is $8 million that is not based on the control of the Board of Supervisors. And the example, just to catch you up to speed, you know, if we're looking at 3.5 million in parking lot replacement that's not due to 2062, this is something that I think causes taxpayers and us as their representatives heartburn to have $8 million in a Maintenance Fund. So, I'm appreciative and you guys are just sort of walking in and I realize that you're coming from your own three-hour-plus meeting. So, we are right now on item nine. And so, we've been talking about the overall funding status, the issue of a Maintenance Fund in general philosophically, the Board, some of the Board's concerns. Without kind of reiterating or rehashing, I would just say, in total, the amount of funding is concerning as well as not having that subject to approval of those who are elected to levy and tax and binding future Boards as a legal question that we're raising. So, Kenny.
Before we, before we move on.
Okay.
This Law Enforcement Center Project Financial Recap summary that was handed out was new today. I'm going to move that we received that.
I'll second the motion. And I hear you Supervisor Ung. So, just one moment. So, this is the Authority update?
This right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Raddick is referencing the Law Enforcement Center Project Financial Recap showing $717,379. He's moved to receive that. I will second. Any discussion on receiving that?
It's just because it wasn't in the backup. It was handed out today. It should be part of the public record.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who both say no, and the motion passes five to zero. I do, Supervisor Ung was trying to make a comment, so go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. Just for some context, I don't think the Board's focus at the time of amending the lease the second time was to, was direct taxation specifically. If you recall previously, the first dollar out of every, you know, dollar of federal revenue would go to the Maintenance Fund. So, if we had 100 inmates, at $100 a day, 365, you know, that's, let's just say it's 3.6 million. The Maintenance Fund would have been filled with $720,000 rather than $400,000. So, it does put the county in a better position. I just want everyone to be aware, this wasn't, I don't think the focus of any Board member was to prefer direct taxation. It simply replenished the Maintenance Fund at a slower rate. And then, question I have is, is this 8 million intended for 20 years? It sounds like, based on your comments, Mr. Taylor, it's intended for far beyond 20 years. So, what are the expenses for 20 years? And because obviously with the intent of the Maintenance Fund shifting back to the county after 20 years, the intent is to have some money there to tackle the most expensive problems after 20 years rather than bond for it at that time. But I am curious, are we talking about 1 or 2 million for the next five years, for the next, you know, what's the number for the next 20 years? That would be helpful.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And I think just for your situational awareness, Supervisor Ung, we have members of the Law Enforcement Center Authority, the Owners' Rep, Kenny Schmitz, who are now here. So, as we move into this next item, that may give you greater granularity on what expenses are ones that are going to be anticipated for 2062 and the cost then versus in the next 20 years before it's transferred over to the county. Kenny?
I'm, I really don't, I missed unfortunately part of item nine. And so, just wanted to speak to that just briefly. I understand the Board's position on protecting the taxpayers and the amounts of funding that's utilized or not utilized toward buildings. One thing I'd like to say to that end is, I don't believe it does the taxpayers or anyone justice if you don't properly fund your buildings for into the future to take care of them. I get that you don't want to hold taxpayer money that you're not utilizing. I totally get that. But there comes a breakpoint, and that's at 1.2 million, where you can no longer do a repair or any projects that exceeds that amount without going to the public for a bond issue vote on it. So, I believe that puts the Board in a bad position. And that's the flip side of the coin that I see where you're possibly not taking, taking care of the taxpayer on that side of the coin. So, I just wanted to speak to that briefly. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Other kind of Supervisor Bettin?
Sure, sure. Well, I understand Supervisor Raddick and Taylor, your positions. And I know we're not necessarily advocating against the Maintenance Fund, but I believe it is. I'd echo Kenny's thoughts. I believe it's very important. I think government over the last 150 years has gotten to the end of the habit of when we need stuff, we go into debt. That's the only way it seems to be in the American mode of life, either government or personal, is debt, debt, debt. And that's concerned to me. As only being here for 10 years in the community, when I came here hearing about the courthouse and I remember reading, there's no funds for this thing. I thought, well, now it's not on the current Board. So, here me, the current Board, you, Matthew and Keith, I'm like, that's a joke. That's a joke. No money's been put aside over the years, over a 100-year building to renovate and make sure that it's going to be up kept, kept up, excuse me, up to the proper protocol maintenance. To me, that's a shame on government leaders. Now, the issue is, right, what is the level of the Maintenance Fund that can be discussed, right? Do we go two times over the bond limit or three? I mean, right now, good practices for your home, your home value, put 1.5% of your home value in a fund to keep that going per year. That's just good home builder's advice on that. So, I would just say, we need it. I personally want to see us get away from CIP projects and long-term debt and build reserves into each building. And so, that's something I'm going to be looking into. How can we do that? I agree. We don't want necessarily tens and tens of millions of sitting there. I do agree with Keith, let's pay off the bond, but I think we have to have a balance to have money there. So, I would, I would, that's just my thoughts. And I'll be bringing more on that here later. So.
And since you guys weren't here for some of the earlier comments, I suggested maybe we go to like a $2 million. And the new number is 1.5 million we can bond. So, you got 3.5 million available. And that's not including any revenue-abated bonds that you can also do on a building that provides revenue. So.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200 Street, Mobile. I don't have a problem with saving money for a bond. I do have a real problem with giving our checkbook to people who are not elected. I just came from an LEC meeting that, I think you all know, I'm pretty proud of my county and I'm proud of the people that work here. That meeting was an embarrassment. These people have not shown any propensity to be open, upfront and honest. And they have not been frugal with our money thus far. It is completely irreprehensible to give them our checkbook. I have no problem. If you want to take the money and put it with Dennis within the county, then it needs to be the county that votes to spend county money. Anything short of that is irresponsible. And we've had enough problems. Let's not create more, you know, let's stop the bleeding. But this is not the way our county government has been working. And I truly believe it's an embarrassment. And I truly believe that the best way for the Board to get a handle on that is for the Board to control the money. I trust you guys. I've seen you guys roll up your sleeves and work through a budget. And I'm an old banker. My own personal feeling is money's money. Doesn't matter whether it's borrowed or whether it's yours. It's money. And the thing is, if you allow people who don't, aren't directly responsible to the voters to control it, it doesn't matter whether it's borrowed or whether it's your money. They're going to throw it away. And we've seen enough of that. We don't need any more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the Board? Supervisor Nelson?
Thank you. I apologize for showing up late. I was up at the LEC meeting. So, I apologize if this has already come up. Has there been any discussion about the legal opinion that we had from Kaminski regarding our bond rating if we were to diminish the Maintenance Fund?
No.
Well, yeah, it was brought up by Dennis.
It was Florida. I think Joshua got the copy, too.
I did not.
Oh, you did not?
Mm-mm.
Yeah, that would be good to be shared with our county attorney. That's been one of the issues of legal advice that we've been struggling with is what the LEC Authority gets versus us. But go ahead.
We'd reached out to Jason Kaminski in regards to either lowering or diminishing the Maintenance Fund. And he wrote back a summary that he thinks that it could affect, negatively affect the bond rating of Woodbury County. I think we'd like to have James or Joshua look into that as well and see if they concur or disagree. But that's something to keep in mind, you know, if we lower it, can we lower it without affecting the bond rating? Maybe so. But if he believes that getting rid of it will negatively affect our bond rating, I think that we have a duty to the taxpayers to not do that. So, I guess we'll make sure that that letter gets to the right people and we can discuss that at a later date.
Did he have a recommendation for us as supervisors on, you know, and has he looked at the numbers in terms of you need to have this amount? And if you don't have this, this will, for example, we brought up. will, for example, we brought up concrete as the first one, and I know that was a little unfair because you all weren't here, but, you know, for example, placing the parking lot in 2062, um, did he say you need to have this much, um, based on his study, or was it just eight million sounds good?
There wasn't any specific numbers either way. Yeah, gotcha.
So with that, uh, we've kind of had a, number nine, the information related to the overall funding status and the issue of a maintenance fund for the Law Enforcement Center. We did receive into the record our budget analyst's summation of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If you take off the five thousand from today and the two hundred and fifty thousand for the maintenance shed, leaving about four hundred and sixty-two thousand, and have had the discussion of the maintenance fund. So item ten, if we can move to, is that, is Building Services, the update on the LEC lease agreement, maintenance and improvement fund, LEC operating expenditures. So this is an item, uh, from Kenny Schmitz, LEC authority in the Baker Group, and I would hand the floor to all of you.
Sorry, I missed the number, I thought we were already given middle.
No, no, so we kind of parsed it out into two parts.
So Shane's got a handout here, it was in your backup material.
If I have the same thing, just because.
You do.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure everybody has a copy of this. Oh, you have a, the exact.
Yeah, and I, maybe we preempted you because it was so small, appreciate it.
Do you have two pa, two, two different handouts?
We have approximately seven, eight pages.
Okay, because yeah, this, this one that looks, is two pages, and then this, because they're two separate.
Oh, yeah, it looks like they're.
Yeah. Okay, so you, you got a vote, okay.
You should have. So the document, you've got, I'll let Shane speak a little bit more too, but, um, that was done by, uh, I guess a combination of Shane, Dale Drenn, and myself, with input from myself, and it was done over a pretty lengthy period of time, and it was updated several times. But, but it bases, uh, on cost expectations.
Excuse me, Kenny, is that, is that in the backup, or?
Yes.
That is in the backup?
Yes. Um, so it bases, it base, it really does two things. It shows, uh, budget figures for cost estimates of the LEC, and also, um, targets, uh, CIP costs or equipment replacement costs, uh, items like that. Dale worked with me a little bit on, um, what our, what our, uh, current LEC budget looks like, in other words, what kind of line items that I look at in my current LEC budgets. He tried to base some of that off of this with a combination of a, uh, template that he uses at Baker Group, um, i- in the, uh, position that he has there. This is kind of a function, uh, of what he does, and Shane, I'll kind of let you take it from here.
Yeah, so first off, Dale apologizes because he couldn't be here tonight because his daughter was running his last, the last cross-country meet, but he will be back on the twenty-fourth to walk through this with everybody and to give everybody enough time to, to ask the Jeremy questions about the concrete, the three and a half billion dollars in 2062. I'm not, I'm not the person to, to defend all those things with you, because this is what Dale does for a living, it's not what I do for a living. And, um, Jeremy's worked with Dale before at the Sioux City School, so I mean, they've had some interactions. One thing you did comment on, Supervisor Taylor, that I wanted to just kind of walk down through, and to be honest with you, these numbers are so small, I'm, it's hard for me to read, but, um, thankfully, I was just upstairs and I had it on my computer and I could see it a little bit, so, um, basically, if you look at what categories are here, we've got general, general requirements, existing conditions, concrete, masonry, metals, uh, woods and, woods and plastics, thermal protection, openings, uh, finishes, specialties, equipment, furnishings, special construction, conveying equipment, fire suppression, plumbing, HVAC, integrated automation, electrical, communications, electrical safety and security, earthwork, exterior improvements, and utilities. Then if you go to the column that says original cost, that is just everything in the concrete section, so the three point five million dollars you were referencing, that's what the bid package is for the concrete out to our project right now. That's where that number comes in, so that's where all those numbers play out. And then we took the, we took each thing as a whole and tried to decide what, what the average of the effective life of all these things was. So when you take each section, you know, division seven is where your roof is, wo-woods, different carpet, different materials, and you looked at that, you get into finishes, you've got painting, you've got carpets, you've got things that don't live as long. But we looked at the life cycle of all those things. There is, there is one thing on this document that I noticed, um, when I was upstairs. If you go to line thirty-two, line thirty-two is, uh, is incorrect. It's showing, uh, it's showing its original date of two thousand, so it's saying you're already, you should already be, uh, fixing your ext, exterior improvements, okay? So that should, um, that should push that out, um, that way. And then if you go to, so, so I think Matthew asked a question. Probably the most powerful thing that's on this document, um, is basically your life cycle cost. Uh, you could put, it's the very first page, um, it's the bar chart. Over to the right, it's, it, it's got these things factored in here, so we start seeing a million dollars, um, in 2023. The jail doesn't open until 2024, just slide twenty-three to twenty-four and move the end of the schedule out. It's trying to show you what, what the average cost of all these things are supposed to be per year. What it's trying to also make sure you understand is, when you get out to, uh, twenty forty, um, and you, well, he'll dive way more deep into this, but you're, you're in a cost that's between four and six million dollars at that time. So back to, for replacing things when you get to twenty forty, okay? And if you slide this one date, maybe that's twenty forty-one now, but it's still, it's still in that timeframe. I think the, the authority will have the jail till, uh, roughly twenty forty-one, I think. I think the, your very first bond payment, it's, it's, it's around in there. So upon that time, in twenty forty-one, this, the responsibility of this building will now be the supervisor's responsibility to, to take on for the next part. One of the things that the authority asked us to do, the only reason we did this, um, was to help them so they understood what they needed to have for money and what kind of expenditures they were going to have, to make sure that when they handed that building over to you in twenty forty-one, it was in as best shape as it could be with equipment replaced when it was supposed to, elevators up to speed, being inspected, and everything else. So if you look at there, you can see, um, a number close to a million dollars, uh, basically annualized for a while, with a couple of years ago, it get worse than that.
Can I say, there's a huge difference between annual operating expenses and a maintenance fund, though? Like, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Because ninety percent of everything in this packet is an annual operating expense to me, so.
And, and to that point, is it fair to say all of the operations budget, none of that's coming out of the maintenance fund, correct?
That is a hundred percent correct.
So for tonight's purposes, and even for, uh, the twenty-fourth, and, and I'm very appreciative, because there's a lot of granularity that I think is going to help us during budget time, when Kenny says, look, this is going to cost a lot more than a nineteen eighty-seven LEC across the street for a capacity of two hundred. Now we have this mu, so that is all very, very much appreciated. But to Keith, or to Supervisor Addick's point, really, we're talking about for the maintenance fund itself, items three through thirty-two, um, those and those alone that would come out of the maintenance fund, and I'm referencing things like concrete, masonry, plastics, openings, finishes, equipment, and so on. Is that correct?
Almost.
Okay.
Thirty-three goes in there too. Utilities is not, utilities is not the utilities to run the building. It's the, it's the water line that's running your fire hydrant, it's, it's the, it's the main feed from the road. It's everything that would be in a utilities package, um, when we bid the project.
And you are replacing that for the first time in twenty fifty-six?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But I, you asked me a question, I wanted to be.
No, that's, that's helpful, so utility lines and replacement.
Utility lines, water lines, everything that runs, as well as the drainage and stuff that goes to those retention pumps, things of that nature. Yes, but they're put in with ductile and materials that last a long time.
No, that makes sense. So, but to the original point of Supervisor Addick, all the operating budget, um, that doesn't have anything to do with the maintenance fund for tonight's purposes, we're essentially talking about lines three through thirty-three. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So then we've got a, a second document here. Again, uh, page one of this has nothing to do with the maintenance fund. So page one of this document, it's just talking about the people, but again, Dale to do this, tried to understand the whole thing and spent a lot of time going through a lot of different pieces, okay? And he's got elevator repairs, so really, and you guys haven't decided this out yet, so the authority is the owner of the building for the next twenty years, okay? You're a tenant, okay? And so is the courts and everybody else, so the authority's responsibility would be to maintain the building. Kind of like you do, when we talked about this with Kenny, um, kind of like you do with Sulan District Health, okay? Some of the small repairs, uh, Kenny pays for, but anything over a certain dollar amount, you expect Sulan District Health to pay for, you bring it to a CIP. You haven't set any of that stuff up with the authority yet, so they don't know, if the elevator breaks, because you're the tenant, who's repairing it? That's, I hope we can have that conversation on the twenty-fourth, but I wanted to hit you with things like that. When the, when the elevator needs maintenance and inspection, because it's part of the building's structure, not part of what you have as a tenant, who's the one responsible for that? Okay? I mean, that's, that's where a lot of this is going, for you to figure out, because if you look at page two, why I picked that, it says repairs and maintenance expenses, okay? And it lays them out by months, and if you just, just deal with the whole thing, there's a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred dollars of what Dale is saying is your general maintenance expenses from, to your point, categories two through thirty-three, okay? But I don't know that anybody's been definitive in, if you look at, if you look at these costs, the most expensive one, HVAC repairs, twenty-four thousand, okay? It's at two grand a month, maybe that's, you're saying you're paying for it, but nobody's really had the conversation yet, because the authority's who's supposed to run it, and you're supposed to be a tenant based on the lease.
But the authority is not paying operating budget, the authority's not paying staff, is that?
Those are fair statements.
That's true, and the ones he's talking about, I would assume Kenny did put in his budget for this year, so this wouldn't come out of the maintenance fund.
Right.
This would come out of his operating budget.
Right.
Because it's an annual cost.
Unless you're volunteering, but that's the irony, right? The, the authority doesn't have any money but what the county gives it, and so I know it's probably a term of art or a legal term, I see us as the owner and I, I see you as, um, being a conduit. I understand you're using some legal terms, and I get that. But I think what we're most interested in potentially tonight is, for example, if we dig into this a little bit, is it a fair statement, Shane, that, uh, there isn't an expense that's forecasted until twenty thirty-two? Is that fair if you take the operations budget that, you know, we are taking, or twenty thirty-three?
If you go to page, sorry, I disagree with that statement.
Okay, I, I just don't see anything in here until that year.
Sure, um, this is why this, Dale will come and explain it more on the twenty-fourth, get your questions ready. If you just turn to page three. It, um, we talked about cameras, lifespan, five to seven years.
Again, I'm seeing all this page, this is.
Keith, do you have your mic? I'll mute you if you need.
Yeah. Plenty of people can shut me down, I know. Uh, the, uh, this page really is more operational or CIP kind of stuff, to me.
What did that, Kenny, if you could come up and wrestle the microphone, appreciate it.
You're talking this page, right?
Okay, uh, I'm not on the same page as you guys, but.
What? This is the page I'm on.
Yeah, that one.
Okay, so yeah.
This is my page three.
Cameras, access control, duress buttons, elevators, yeah, all this, to me, is more CIP type.
What, what's the cost for the cameras?
What?
What is the cost for the cameras? Is it replacement or maintenance, and maintaining them?
Um, so, so the cameras, the warranty, and they're, um, so their warranty is for five years. They recommend at the end of that five years, so that's why it says five to seven, that they're replaced because of the technology. This new jail is going to, um, supposed to need less supervision, but it has a lot more people. There is a lot of cameras, there is over two hundred and fifty cameras in this building, there's three hundred and twelve lenses. What that means is different views, multi-place cameras, and things of that nature.
So what is the replacement cost after five years?
What is the replacement cost after five years? The camera package is seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so every.
Just replace the cameras.
So every five to seven years, you throw them all away and you get all new? Is that the case?
I would not say that, that's not the frugal way to do it.
Doesn't sound like it either, but keep going.
Um, so what I would say is you take, there's cameras in this building, that they may, there may be better, there may be better technology in this time, and, and, and please understand, I'm not the person that's going to make that decision, right? But, but from my opinion, if you ask me my opinion, there's cameras in the courtrooms, okay? Those cameras, you've got cameras that are still live after twenty years, okay? There's cameras that are in the jail, though, that are part of the recording thing, that are part of the officer's safety and part of where the inmates are and stuff. That's a completely different puzzle. Again, somebody's going to have to make that decision. You've got corner cameras and cells and different things that you need to have the utmost technology, not, that's somebody's choice again, sir, but. My recommendation is you would have to look at this building in multiple different parts, whether you're in prisoner safety, prisoner sheriff's office, people's safety, or whether you're in just the general camera on the outside of the building, pick what, pick those cameras, okay?
And I'm super appreciative of this, just, uh, by way of example, and this isn't throwing stones at anybody, but we were told, um, maybe a half hour ago, that the assumption was it was two million dollars every five years.
I made that statement.
Yeah, and, and that's not me throwing stones at you, Danny, please, please understand that. But what we're hearing now is, no, it's seven hundred thousand, and you don't have to do that every five years. Now, maybe you are smart about it, and you say, okay, we're going to replace the twenty percent worth failing one, I, I get it. I think what we're trying to do is hone in with some granularity, maybe the right amount is two million dollars, maybe it's three million dollars, maybe it's subject to approval of the Board of Supervisors by majority vote. But when you say those decisions are something that are going to be made, right now, the lease is written in such a way that it's the sole discretion of the authority. And to our citizen's point back there, that's a lot of money to have two people making those kind of decisions on. So I think there's some balance, I don't, there's no either or, but I think getting to what is the actual number, um, that's going to be responsible, something that we're trying to kind of dig in and ask.
I think that's something Dale can probably speak to when he does this.
Right.
Well, again, I'm just, I'm not trying to be, it says operations budget right on here.
It's the title for the thing, it's not, it's not what it really is.
Right, but I'm just seeing it as, okay, so at the bottom, it totals it up three hundred and forty-five thousand per year. That's a lot less than eight million, again. Dennis, you may have been referencing the security electronics package at two point five million.
Three forty-five, if that's our annual cost.
Right.
We're barely keeping up at four hundred thousand a year.
Right, but again, this is.
Then over ten years, you're going to accumulate about five million dollars by four hundred thousand dollars, plus what you got in there now. Borrowing any maintenance costs, but some of these costs here, they're called maintenance on page two. really are incorporated, I think, and then should be in Kenny's budgets, because they're annual costs, just like a contract to scoop snow, or a contract to do this, 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 or this.
If we replace TVs in the LEC now, don't we typically use part of the, uh, telephone funds from inmates? I, I mean, I think we use a variety of sources of revenue now, and I mean, how have we done it before our board existed? I mean, there's, all these things were done through CIP throughout all these years. So, why would we just change right now because the building's new? It doesn't make sense.
So, again, I'm, I think when this originally was set, how I read the lease, and I'm not an attorney, the gentleman sitting next to you that is an attorney, but the, the lease was set up so that there wasn't you doing the CIP projects to, to fix something and stuff. It was met so that they were taking the money and the revenue from this, and that building was so, sustained. It was, it had the funds in it to do the CIP things, and I would, I would challenge you with this simple thing. Building services is gonna be there, the Kenny Schmitz or the next Kenny Schmitz are. Put some, put something in so that you're controlling, just like you do your CIP processes. People aren't just doing it, people have to bring them, score it, rate it, however that is. But this was a new thing, so there, there would have to be guidelines to make it make sense to everybody. But to your question, Keith, they were doing it so there was, that building had its, didn't have to come to the taxpayers for additional monies for that, it was supposed to be done through the maintenance fund.
Well, and again, when we get back to the original intent of the maintenance fund and the mayor insisting upon it, it was because we wanted to avoid the HVAC system issue, and when the plumbing issues and the whole building, I mean, the copper's disintegrating over there and we have leaks all the time, right? It wasn't for radios, it wasn't for electronic system, it wasn't for, you know, uh, cracked ceiling in the parking lot or whatever. So, it, it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff on here, TVs, water softener, fire alarms, jail locks. That wasn't what caused this building to go bad.
No, a lot of not taking care of it was.
Yeah. So, that's just.
All I can say to that end, and as part of this, and this isn't my argument, uh, to get into, I would like to see this board in the future change the way you're doing things, and get away from CIP. I'd like you to fund buildings and something, maybe this isn't the perfect way, but I think this is a conduit that should be looked at. Um, again, I know you do not like to hold taxpayer money that you're not utilizing, but I also think you're, um, you're being a good business agent of your taxpayers if you fund your repairs that you're going to need, and you have the funds available when you need them. Um, and I wanted to just to answer Dennis's question here real quickly about, well, this should be part of the, uh, maintenance budget. Yes, and it really is, Dennis, this is just a, this was done as an all-encompassing, um, focus on what it's gonna cost to run that building. Um, so, that's why you see some of this.
A lot more costs over here.
A, a lot more, yeah.
Like bar.
And part of when this document was put together, what, what its initial purpose was, this building originally was gonna open April first, okay? So, when Kenny was, when we did this, the whole meetings were set up to try to help Kenny have a better understanding of what he had to bring to you guys for that part of that budget. Um, was it to lean on us to help him with that, because this, we got no skin in this. I mean, this, this, I'm not the one do, gonna be doing this in the future, this is you with your local people up here. This was just us being Baker, trying to help Kenny know what numbers he needed, because he had a brand-new building that's bigger than the LEC, that has way more inmates. It was, that's why there's so many categories in here, was so Kenny would help, have to know kind of things he needed a budget for and everything else.
I know, I know all the, all supervisors have had an opportunity to, to visit, uh, the new facility yet, but I think those that have, um, I'd be surprised if you didn't tell me it was an eye-opener as, as to the size and the, uh, integration and different things that are involved with that facility. It's, it's something else.
Out of curiosity, Dennis, what is their bond payment? Is it three?
Three point six million.
Three point six.
Very just a few thousand each year.
So, you have that, and then the four hundred thousand we're taxing currently for the maintenance fund?
And the way that was set up originally, in the original lease, that we're dividing eighty, twenty, for, which included principal and interest. So, we did change that in an amendment where we get the first three point six million. There is no split of the eighty, twenty, which saves us about seven hundred thousand. The four hundred thousand then would take in twenty, eighty, plus the four hundred thousand.
So, if I'm interpreting what you're saying, so that the slowest guy in the room gets this, you're saying that we're directly taxing four hundred thousand dollars? Once we satisfy the three point six with inmate revenue, anything that comes over and above that is split eighty percent to the county and twenty percent to the authority?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty percent goes to the maintenance fund, plus the four hundred thousand.
Above the four hundred thousand, so it could grow at a faster rate than four hundred thousand a year, it could be a million dollars a year.
Yeah, and once you reach eight million, the twenty percent goes away, but the four hundred keeps rolling on for the twenty years.
So, numbers-wise, I would tell you, if you can get a million dollars a year, that twenty percent split, that's great. But I'm, that's a huge number, because at a hun- based on the numbers, uh, that they're looking at, that's three point six, right? That just covers the bond payment. The next three point six, twenty percent of that would only be, would be seven, that's putting two hundred federal inmates over in, in the new facility. So, having it get bigger than a million dollars would be a challenge, just based on the size of the building. I, I, I wasn't, I was just, we're gonna pick up, talk about numbers, that's not probably a realistic number when you look at it.
Well, if I do the math, if, you're probably looking at eight hundred and seventy-six thousand a year going into the maintenance fund from the revenue.
You're counting four hundred thousand plus the twenty percent.
Oh, if you take four hundred plus that, then you're talking one point two seven.
I don't, it won't be that much.
I don't know, I, because if you, so, right now, the first three point six, five million dollars, there's no eighty, twenty split on that, zero.
Okay, okay.
Zero.
Okay.
So, 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 so that's already got you to a hundred. I don't know if I can share the number that you get paid per inmate, but that gets you.
Changed on a map.
It's all public, I think.
Is it public now?
Pretty sure.
Okay.
We'll lay around the side of caution if it's not, I see that look maybe like.
No, it was, uh, publicly brought to this board, so.
So, anyway, that's, that's a hundred of your revenue, that's that number, Keith, so that's.
So, it's four hundred plus one forty-six, so about five forty-six, if you're giving me.
Twenty percent would be one forty-six.
Yeah.
And that's having a hundred and twenty-five prisoners.
Hundred and twenty, yeah.
So, we're close, yep. And once it hits the eight million, then the twenty percent goes all to Woodbury County, and the four hundred keeps going. The only thing with the four hundred, you're gonna keep building up over the eight point four, or eight million, you're going up to eight four, eight, eight, nine million.
There's really no cap then, Dennis. There's really no hard cap then.
Um, yeah, eight million for the twenty, eighty split.
True.
Beyond that, no, there is no hard cap, but when you're going above the eight million, if there's a project, it avoids them to come back and ask the county for more money, or for us to make it up to get back to the eight million.
Because they can spend it on their own. The right, the right, the lease says right now that the.
They have sole authority.
Yep, the sole authority is what the authority.
Yes.
For all the money that we're taxing.
Yes.
Okay. That, that to me is more heartburn than I know what to do with.
Well, yeah, because, I mean, if you think about the, the idea behind we're taxing and giving the money to another body to spend, I don't think that's legal.
Remember too, you got two elected officials sitting in there, city councilman and Mr. Nelson.
Today, we do, but we didn't, correct? We had, we had somebody who was not elected from our board previously, correct?
Rocky, when he got elected to legislature, and that should have been changed probably then, to make sure, but it's past history.
Right, I guess my point is, my point, that I, I don't believe that's responsible. I think there aren't safeguards in there.
So, the only thing I would say, when you said there's not really a cap, okay? Based on the numbers that Keith had or whatever, this is going on for another, let's just call it twenty years to make it simple, okay? There's eighteen left. Um, five twenty was the number Keith said, and that's at a hundred and twenty inmates on average for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, right? So, that's ten point, ten million, four hundred thou- four hundred dollars, right, ten million, four hundred thousand over twenty years. That, that would be the, and that's spending not one dime. So, when you say it doesn't really have a cap, well, kinda, kinda just based on its numbers, it, it has a, it has a cap stuck to it. I understand you don't necessarily always agree with that, but I'm just saying it does have a cap. Okay. Any other questions? Like I said, Dale can get way more deep into the questions.
So, one thing that I think might be helpful, and thank you for, I know you all have spent a, it's been a long day. Um, one thing that I think would be helpful, at least from my vantage point, would be to know, for example, equipment. You know, if we can get to the level of granularity, some of this, to me, I'm not worried about the parking lot in twenty sixty-two. I'm worried about the train chiller, or the, you know, this boiler system, and breaking this down to here, here is the, the specific specifications of this, and what we think would be responsible versus, well, you probably don't need to replace this. That's what I'm more interested in, and I, past twenty forty-two, you know, when it's the county's sole entity, um, owning, I'm, I'm less worried about making decisions for people in sixty years, or fifty years, or forty years, and building up funds today, especially when we're facing the budget shortfall, we are, because that's the other flip side of this, is it's a luxury to have maintenance funds in every building, um, except when you sit through the budget and it's gonna relate to a direct tax increase. And right now, this board is facing a four and a half million dollar shortfall, and so, my, my number one question will be, where are you getting those dollars? And it's going to be from a tax increase, probably the largest one in the last thirty years. Um, we have to make up four and a half million dollars, we're starting at that hole, four hundred thousand of it, um, those are tax increases. And if that's a philosophical divide, then it is, but those are, it's easy to say, it's really hard to do, so, yeah.
The only place we can have a tax increase would be general sup and debt service. General basic, the levy's gonna go down because they got us capped. General, rural basic, the levy's going down, and there's nothing we can do, we can't raise it. Now, we could lower it if we had more, but why not levy the maximum we can, because we're gonna get burned down the road? Because you gotta use your current taxes, plus we have five hundred thousand more in general basic, and that's it. So, what's gonna happen, if the valuation goes up, we can only go this far, our rates are probably gonna drop eight, nine cents on our general basic, and that was the intent of this legislation, to get us back down to the three fifty, and then pass it back to the board and say, you guys make the cuts. It's a backdoor way to reduce county government and city government. I've always said that, and they got it done.
We've already gotten two years on the bond already, right?
Yes.
So, it started in twenty twenty-one, so anything beyond twenty forty-one is kind of reaching beyond.
There won't be bond payments. Three point five, or six disappears.
Right, so.
Which is huge.
After twenty forty-one, there's no authority, it's just all on the county at that point. So, there's no lease, there's none of it.
I think, I think, yeah, I think Keith's talking about the, the maintenance expenses after twenty forty-one would be incurred by us, that that, the authority would have nothing to do with that. I thi- is that what you're saying, Keith?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That money comes back to you guys. Whether it's two million, eight million, or fifty million, it comes back to you guys to use, hopefully for maintenance on buildings, but it comes back at your discretion, do what you want with it.
So, is there a way to get to moving the ball down, we're appreciative of this, to get to some of that granularity for when Dale comes, if you could kind of be a conduit of that information? And then, beyond twenty forty-two, if we have that much revenue coming in, then it can help to meet some of those maintenance expenses beyond that. Um, and then, this is just something to put in front of the authority, two of, uh, whom we have as members here. I think for safeguards, I believe that, uh, having approval by the majority of the Board of Supervisors, not even if it's this board, ten years from now, twenty years from now, fifteen, I think that that is a reasonable safeguard. So.
I have a question for you, if I could.
Sure.
I understand your concern. Ron Wick, forty-three, sixty-two, Old Lakeport Road. But, what I'm hearing you say is you're concerned that the authority, and it won't be me then, but the authority's gonna go out and replace a cooling unit, or replace a heating unit, or replace water softeners just to do it, because they're not responsible. The only time that money would be spent from this fund would be when a cooling unit fails and has to be replaced. It's not going to be something that the authority can go buy lavish things and add to the building, it's for maintenance of the building. And the only time you're gonna need maintenance on something is when that thing fails. I, I, you're, you're kinda kicking me a little bit, okay?
It's not you personally, Ron, it could be ten years.
I know, I know, I know, but you understand, you understand what I'm saying to you?
I do.
The authority, the authority's not going to go out and say, uh, we got this big maintenance fund, and boy, we haven't had to spend any money, so let's go buy a giant statue and put it in the front parking lot. That's not gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that it is, I don't think you're gonna buy statues or just replace things willy-nilly.
But that's what I'm hearing.
Well, what I think you're hearing is that twelve years from now, and, and maybe you'd be on the authority for the next twelve, fifteen, twenty.
I doubt that'll happen because of my age.
Well, let's say fifteen years from now, there's somebody that is, is not Ron Wick there, and you have a completely different board. Um, that person is not elected, and somebody says, you know what? I think our chiller is five years away from its, the end of its useful life, let's replace it now. And we say, geez, that's not really a good use, person's not elected, we're the ones that get our feet held to the fire and say, hey, if you do that, and you, that results in direct increase to my property taxes, we're gonna throw you out next time. And so, I guess my question back to the authority would be, what would, uh, what would be the heartburn from the authority's standpoint of having the majority, three out of the five supervisors who are taxing people, say, we concur with you? Why does it have to be two out of the three that aren't elected? I don't, it's just a question.
As was stated here a little bit ago, you've got two elected people on the authority right now, and.
No offense to Mark, but he hasn't been elected. But I'm sure he will be in the future, so.
And, and we could carry this conversation on, I just had to get up and talk about that, but Dale will be here, and he will go into more detail, but I think, please, stop and think about the fact that you're talking about three of your fellow citizens of Woodbury County, we're not gonna go out. I don't see the authority going out and buying a new cooling unit, because it's only got five years left on it. I, I, I don't see that happening, I, I, I think we're speculating on something there that goes beyond realistic thinking, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and we can have, I, I appreciate being able to, to disagree without being disagreeable and.
We're doing good, we're doing good.
Yeah.
I, I guess I did wanna just reiterate a point earlier, too, is that if we're taxing as the county, Woodbury County, for a maintenance fund for the building, but then handing the money over to the authority to spend, uh, it's kind of a conflict we've had, where we can't tax and send to a city to spend necessarily. So, really, um, I think you, you bring up the legal challenge of it, where can we actually even do that by this lease? So, really, should the revenue all come from, uh, a- any of the, the money that goes into the maintenance fund should maybe actually have come from the revenue side of it, from inmates, rather than from us taxing for it? Although, operationally, if it's operational expenses, that can come out of our budget, and that's part of our operational expense, running the facility. So, I, you know, I think if you're looking at those legal question and answer, it's not so much that, you know, we don't trust Ron Wick. I, I'm not saying that, it's just the question of, we tax at the county level, we can't really send that over to the authority to spend, is what I think is maybe the deeper.
Well, let's, Dale will be here, and he'll go into more detail on this, and let's continue to talk.
Yeah, I, I appreciate it very much, and I appreciate you. I, I appreciate it very much and I appreciate you all being here to, other comments, questions?
The only thing I would say is I think a lot of the discussion, while it has been good, I, I think until we've got a sound legal opinion on what, if it would affect our bond rating or not, none of this really matters.
Well, it didn't affect the bond rating, the bond's being paid through the debt levy. So, they really, I think they'd be giving bad bond advice if they said it would. What would maybe make more sense right now, instead of taxing four hundred grand a year to put all as a maintenance fund in the only building we have that produces revenue? Maybe put four hundred thousand a year into a general building maintenance fund that could be used for all the buildings of Woodbury County. You know, if you're thinking from a county supervisor's standpoint, what makes more sense, right? Because the LEC is the only building that has revenue abated bond potential. None of these other buildings do. So it would make more sense to stick four hundred grand a year into, uh, a sinking fund, so to speak, for Trosper, for this building, for, uh, VA, you know, for Sheriff's Training Center. You know, just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, or concerns as it relates to this item? All right, well, seen, no further discussion. Thank you again, and we will look forward to a discussion on the twenty-fourth as well as continued dialogue. Um, I did wanna bring up, uh, the statement, is that something that you wanted us, um, in terms of the LEC authority to receive at our, our meeting, or do you think it's sufficient, uh, having been given at the LEC authority meeting? Is that something that you believe is necessary for us to?
You'd have to ask Pat. No, they, they passed a motion, right, to issue the press release.
Okay.
Because we did issue the press release, like you, like you suggested.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, having dispensed with items, uh, one through twelve, we are now to item thirteen, which is citizen concerns.
Everybody, Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Selex, just as a reminder, I have two things that are super, super quick. One, I'm one of your hundreds of followers on your YouTube channel.
Yes.
I know hundreds, and at least one meeting every month, there's been something going on where it cuts off after less than thirty minutes. And I know that you guys don't go under thirty minutes. So, for example, it happened on September nineteenth, on August twenty-second, and on July twenty-fifth. All of them were less than thirty minutes, and the last one, I was watching live and it just cut off, it was weird. So, something for you guys to look into and get fixed.
Is that something, Pat, that's virtue of, uh, I know sometimes there's live versus it being pre-recorded? He was mentioning that sometimes at the thirty minute mark, it, it's cutting off?
It's not even at thirty minutes, some of them are at twenty-seven minutes, some of them are at twelve, or seventeen.
You're saying all the items haven't been dispensed with on the agenda, Kevin?
Oh, sorry, what?
You're saying all the items have not been dispensed with, the meeting hasn't finished or adjourned?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to add, I have seen it in the past, it's very sporadic, kinda like you showed there, but I've, before I was in this capacity, I would watch meetings and there were times where it was usually right around thirty minutes and they'd just be mid-sentence, halfway through agenda, boom, it's gone.
Is exactly right.
So, it has been plagued for a little while, but I didn't know if that was still going on, so I, thank you.
So, that's the first thing, and the second thing is super, super quick too, uh, I'm also the chairman of the landfill. Cause nobody else wanted to jump on that one. Uh, we had an email from Gil Halling, from two of the people at Gil Halling last week come to me. The, uh, email, it said there, there's some crane out there that's broken. And I forwarded that email to Dennis and to Jeanette, and I, like, I don't know what you guys, I don't know what to do here. Uh, Jeanette said that some contract was signed before my time, uh, before Jeanette's time, on who owns all that stuff out there? I have no clue. I don't know if the county's supposed to fix stuff, if the county even owns it, no idea. So fun stuff for Mr. Whitman to find out, if there's some contract out there, but I'm just the messenger for you guys to figure out what equipment out there do we own, if any, and what do you guys want me to tell Gil Halling? About this crane.
Dennis?
And I think when they did get rid of it and sent to Gil, they did sell all the equipment. That equipment might have been something left there, that possibly they might have been using. Problem is, they need something out there to empty those dumpsters, the way I understand, or load them.
That's my understanding.
And it's a question, do they buy it, or do we buy it, or the landfill buy it? Not us, the landfill. That's something I guess we'll have to ask Joshua.
Didn't we get out of owning all the equipment? Didn't we get out of owning all the equipment?
We sold it all, so the crane is something that's left over.
They provide the transfer service.
Yes.
I mean, you'd have to look at what the contract says with them, but my guess is they provide the equipment and the service.
Do you want me to respond to that and copy in Dennis saying, we don't own the crane, best of luck to you? Do you guys want me to say?
Well, we need to do the best to verify that with whatever records we have. And if somebody wants me to take a look at the contract, I can.
That'd be great, Dennis has been copied in on the, on the last emails, this was brought up last week, so it's not like it's been a long time, but I'm more than happy to pass this one off to you guys.
Forward me whatever you got, but-
We'll have to get a copy of the contract, current one, who is responsible.
All right, you're gonna take it on Dennis and Joshua?
Yep.
Yes.
I can do it.
Excellent, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Other citizen concerns. Hearing, none. Uh, we're gonna move to item fourteen, board concerns. My phone died, so Supervisor Young is no longer with us. Anyone? I do have one thing I just wanted to bring up for, uh, the good of the public. The question has been raised on, uh, the county tables that were purchased, uh, for the Sulan Chamber Dinner. There were, uh, four supervisors, um, who had been, uh, allowed to sit, um, with no expense, the county attorney, county engineer, and emergency management director. Everyone else was purchased, uh, if there were spouses or significant others. Any extra seating was allocated towards the Chamber of Commerce to fill if needed, and a request was made for veterans to be given priority. I don't have a list of those, um, but I just wanted for the situational awareness of those who are inquiring that is the information, and that individual can follow up with me if need be, and I can give you the, the names. Anything else for the good of the cause?